Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, July 11, 2023. This is continuing to be a hybrid meeting. So in person, we are at the Norton Media Center, 184 West Main Street. Members of the public or others interested in the meeting are able to join via Zoom, use the link available in the meeting agenda, or meeting ID 6389291060. There's also a phone number for dial-in direct. The meeting will also be available on Norton Cable Access, Channel 15. Again, as this is a hybrid meeting, if members of the public have questions they'd like to submit to the board ahead of the meeting, please submit them to Brian Carmichael, member of town staff who's seated to my right, and they can be read into the record if you are not able to attend in person. So move out of the way. I'll call the general part of the meeting to order here. We do not have any specific planning board business and policies that I'll go through at this time. We do have the Code of Conduct, which was sent around, which we can discuss at the end of the meeting. But in the interest of moving ahead with the three projects that we have, we can go through those and then circle back to the Code of Conduct at the end. We don't have any bills or warrants to approve at this time, and we do not have any minutes to approve at this time either. So with that out of the way, the first item on our agenda for projects is an A&R endorsement, 20108, for Zero Mansfield Avenue. So I think the applicant is joining us here via Zoom. So if you can just please introduce yourself and give a quick introduction. And just for the board's understanding, this applicant will likely appear our next meeting to discuss a special permit regarding this property, but right now we are just discussing the A&R. So I apologize for introducing you and then cutting you off, but please go ahead.
Okay. My name is Adam Hunt with the Design Group.
I'm Jack Jacobi, attorney for Besarn Hook &amp; Smith, 144 Bank Street, Attleboro. And this is a fairly straightforward Form A. We're taking six lots and dividing them, re-dividing them, so there are three lots. Each one of the lots, which are labeled C, D, and E, are at frontage on Mansfield Avenue and have the requisite area. And so we are asking you to endorse them. And yes, in two weeks, we will be here in front of you with some development plans that we're proposing. If you see at the top of the plan, you'll see A and B are untouched. It's the three across the bottom, so C is where the cursor is now, then D is in the middle, and E is the final lot.
And just to confirm, A and B are remaining as lots on Reservoir Street?
That is correct.
Okay.
There is no development proposal for either of those lots.
So just by way of wayfinding, this is at the intersection of Mansfield Avenue and Reservoir Street, right at that corner?
Yes, that is correct.
So does anybody have any questions about the A&R specifically at this time?
Are we allowed to ask what the intention behind the lot increase is?
Yeah, we can ask, but I want to make sure we don't get into any substantial discussion about the projects that we're going to have on the special permit review.
Sure. I'm just curious why divide six lots into, well, turn it into, I guess, three?
I don't want to violate the special permit process, and that's on in two weeks, but we need to create three lots that are of sufficient size for the proposed projects that you'll see two weeks from tonight.
Okay.
Which are the dotted squares you see on the A&R?
Sure.
I just had one, I'll call it a comment, that the plans that are before us at the moment with this A&R are using the minimum lot area for single-family homes.
Okay.
And the shape lot factor calculation is also using single-family.
Okay.
As a comment.
Okay. I think part of our standard process with A&R is we're not determining whether something is correctly zoned or not, or laid out for zoning. It's changing the lot lines. But yeah, good point. Thank you. Any other questions? I'll open up if anybody joining the meeting remotely has any comments outside of the Alan, I didn't mean to cut you off there if you have an additional comment or question.
I was going to make a motion.
Okay. I think we've given people enough time if they wanted to make a comment.
Motion to approve A&R 20108. Sign of it.
Just to confirm that the motion to endorse?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Make a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to endorse? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Okay. So the A&R will be endorsed. Brian, do we have a hard copy with us here this evening?
Adam, can you get us a hard copy of this A&R proposal the board can sign?
Sure.
For next meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll try and bring one down tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you both. Okay. The next item up on the agenda is a determination regarding Zero South Washington Street. I know the engineer, Mr. Crowell, is here with us in the building. I think he may have wandered off for a second, so he'll be here shortly. Just to provide some discussion, this is Zero South Washington is a project that we saw recently. The process that we are going through now is the applicant's come up with a revised plan. So it is, under the regulations, we can't consider a project for the same plan with a certain amount of time after it's already been denied. So the first step would be reviewing the applicant's proposed plan and making a determination whether we feel it is a substantial change from the original in terms of determining whether it needs those criteria for being substantially different. And that substantially different relates to the reasons for its denial. So that's what we're looking to do. If we make the determination that it is substantially different, then it would move forward as a new project. If we make the determination that it is not sufficiently different, then the time period where we can't hear it stays in place. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm not sure whether, Bob, you want to leave the discussion, or Dave?
Dave?
I think Dave will.
Maybe I can open it and talk to him.
Sure.
Yeah, that's okay.
Sure. And you can just introduce yourself for the record again.
My name is Dave Tooke. I own Norton Shoring Corporation in the town here in Norton, and the property in question here at Zero South Washington Street, I guess we refer to. And as we all know, we had the project here with Amazon to get this parking lot in back that we went through all the process and everything, and whatever reason, it fell apart. It didn't work out. So now, I think it's the best thing to do is to kind of move on from that and just give me some, totally different plan from that. And just put that aside and just go with a simple plan that's very common in town and adds to my existing business. And I think at this point, I'd rather just go with a lay-down yard. Let's just leave it at that for now. Not even deal with this Amazon anymore.
Can you, just for a point of clarification, a lay-down yard? I'm not sure if I'm familiar with the terminology.
Well, a storage yard for equipment. For instance, down the street, we have a, what you would call that a lay-down yard with the, they sell stone, sell things for backyard fixtures and backyard renovation and patios and all that kind of thing. You know, pipes for, sometimes there's companies that have lay-down yards for pipes for sewer and street work and all that. My business is trench washes, where we sell them in trench washes to guys in the excavation business, so the guys putting all their utilities in around the world don't get buried alive. That's my business and to help those men do that work and stay out of trouble and obviously work safely and according to OSHA. So that's, at this point, I need more room for that, and I do need a building over there. And I would like to, Bob and I talked about, I'd like to propose like a 4,500 square foot garage building, three or four bays, and gravel, gravel the area, everything inside the area that the conservation commission allows us to do. And we've already got that, we've already been through everything with them, and we know where everything is stands over there, so we have an accurate plan for that. It's pretty much, I guess, it's already been approved.
Yeah, the wetlands have been delineated, and maybe if you want, we could go to the next, we have two other plans that we have.
Is it this one or is it?
Go to the next one. It's hard to see, but basically, the line closest to the wetland would be the proposed tree line.
That's a 25-foot setback, right?
A 25-foot setback. And so the tree line would be three or four feet beyond that. And then we have an area where it would be tree, and then gravel would be put in, placed on it so you could drive these trucks over it and place. In his business, he's got the trench boxes, he's got plates that he puts down on roadways when you open them up. So he needs more room.
He needs more room.
You know, we would have to go before conservation, so the line, there's a line there that would be, we might be within the 200 feet, foot of riverfront area. We presently have gone out and flagged a little more extensively of the riverfront, and we're going to be going out there a few times to make sure that it is a perennial stream.
So I think what we're seeing is right now that part of it's up for, just that one corner of it is still to be determined, but the rest of it is all set.
Yes.
Which is 90% of the job, 85% of the job. We'd like to get going on that if that falls within the right use and everything else.
So, you know, the other plan that we had, we had 100 vehicles going in and out. Again, I didn't think that was a big deal, but you're not going to have that many vehicles coming in and out of here. That's for certain. And if you go back up to the top, so we can see up to the street, when we first came before you, we had an entryway right there. It's right near that corner. And because of the changed use, if we move it that way, you're going to have good sight distance there. It's going to be actually better if you get more straight away, so that shouldn't be a problem at all.
Is that still roughly across from the cabinet driveway?
Yes. Yes, yes. Pretty close.
And this would be, as it's been described, this would be an industrial use?
Yes.
So this would, in the industrial zone, is your expectation this would fall into it has a bright use?
Pretty much. I did, the area that we did use, we did consider, there's a few residential people across the street, so we would have a 20-foot buffer there, so we wouldn't be interfering with that. So, you know, that was, we got that on the second, third iteration that we did on our last plan, and we show it right there now.
So, any members have any questions for the applicants? Obviously, this is just a determination. If there are cases that we would need further details, or if we feel we need a peer review on something, that's a different discussion, but.
I have a couple of questions. I'm confused. This plan showing limit of tree clearing substantially less than the next plan that shows where the building's going to go. They're very conflicting plans.
I have, yeah, I kind of have a question.
Completely confused.
Are you planning to put a building on the property or not? Because one shows just an open gravel lot.
We came here with, this is the plan that we were most interested in, okay? And we decided, we're moving on from Amazon. So what we just showed you, if we go back to the other plan.
Do you get what I'm saying? You're showing that plan with the building with all the Amazon lots with Amazon stacks.
Okay. No, no. So we came in.
So if that plan had the building on it, it'd be really different.
We came in here.
I know how you came in here. I was here.
So, just for a clarifying question.
We would add a bill, we would add a building to this.
So I'm asking, why isn't that building on that plan showing what you were?
Because originally, we had plans to come here trying to get the Amazon thing going forward. And now, that's not going to happen.
So. Obviously.
So.
We have some more work to do.
I think the question that Alan and Steve were asking is, Dave, when he introduced it, said that he was planning to have a building on the site with the lay-down yard. So this plan doesn't show a building.
Right.
So is that third one, third option that we did have that show that, Bob?
So that, that's the.
So this plan here was to be disregarded, this up. Just disregard that one.
Throw that one out.
And then you did two other ones, remember?
Yeah, and we showed, no, we showed a third, we showed the smaller one was just under an acre of land that we had disturbing.
So.
No, not that one. The other one was, disregard the one with that one. The third one was a building.
I think, if I'm correct, that there's three pages on the plan.
There's four.
There's four. Okay.
What happened is, we did a plan, I submitted all the plans, and then the very next day, I was able to talk to John Thomas. And what we did is, there's some isolated wetlands down there. And initially, I went, we were going to fill those isolated wetlands in. And I talked to my, the boughtness, and he said, if you can get out of that area, if you can avoid that, do that at all costs, and it would be better, conservation would like that much better. So, so that's what we did.
If I may, I think there should be a fifth map here, one where it's just a lay-down yard, like a gravel yard with no parking spaces on it, but including a building. If that's being proposed. Because right now, we're being presented with the options of a full parking lot and building, or just a gravel yard with no building.
No, I have, well, let me see if I can find this real quick. Do we have a third, was there a third one that you gave them?
No, it's just not.
We have a Concept 2 and a Concept 3, both are gravel yards, neither have a building.
So that's, I think, the confusion that we're pointing to, is that the only thing that we see with a building is the parking lot, and what you're describing is not the parking lot. So that's the.
No.
There was a Concept 1 and then a 1A. The 1A is the one that I stayed out of the, entered the.
So that's, I think, where the confusion of the members are.
No, I understand that. So.
I think that's in here somewhere.
Okay.
Because I, there's just been so many different things going back and forth, and I'm looking right now, if I can find it, I can put that right up here.
So Alan, does that clear up the, in theory, does that clear up the confusion that you have with the plans?
In theory, we're looking at, it's labeled chic-out layout yard number two, sheet three. If it was that plan, gravel lot.
With a building on it.
With a building on it. That'd be much clearer.
If I saw it on the image, I'll get it to you right away. With the gravel on there.
Okay.
I'll give it to you. I thought we had it up here, but I can have, we can have that play tomorrow.
Steve, did you have any additional? Did you have additional questions?
I was just going to follow up. If that's what we were talking about, then I would absolutely think that that's completely different than we saw before. I would definitely say that was substantially different than what we saw.
Steve, did you have any additional questions?
Yeah, I have, like, you know, I'm hearing this fresh. I wasn't at the last meeting. You know, I'm not against the building, per se, or anything like that. I'm not against the gravel yard or necessarily parking, if any of it's done right. But I'm just, I need to see the actual plan.
Of course, absolutely. If you could give us a couple of minutes, I could get it, and we could get it, or we could print out one of these ones that we have here, and we could draw it on just to show you what it is, and then come back with everything formally correct.
Tim, I think we have what we need to see, that it's different. You know what I mean? We're not approving anything. If they're saying it's that.
We're just saying it's different.
Building on it.
Yes.
If that's what they're saying, that's what it's going to be. I don't get to see the lines on it.
That was going to be my next question, is what do we feel we need to see at this point?
I think we're good with saying this is different.
I think what we're doing is asking if it's okay to proceed with that.
Do they need our?
Are we safe to proceed?
They need our, they need a determination from us.
Yeah.
That the proposal is substantially different than what was denied. And then they would proceed.
The new proposal doesn't need a special permit?
It will if it's approved. If the determination is approved, it'll go through the same process again.
Of a new project.
Okay. What's the requirement for this special permit?
Which would be depending on the number of parking spots, the size of the building, the same things for a standard industrial project.
If there are no parking spots, it'll be all gravel.
Any vehicles at all parked there?
There might be.
Employee parking.
There might be.
There would be a determin, based on the size of the building, the zoning code is a specific amount of parking spots required for industrial.
But like I said, it's.
You're going to have plenty of space.
Construction, equipment, yeah, for our trench wash business.
I mean, he has two or three guys at his place.
But it's not going to be an office where people are going in and out on a set basis. It's, we might have a plot truck that sits there all summer.
Yeah.
You know, maybe use, or a loader or a forklift.
I don't have the table in front of me. I want to say a 4,000 square foot building is like five spots or six spots. I'm making that up, but.
But I guess I'm confused. Can you even have real spots on a gravel place, a gravel driveway?
You would just have to show that there's room for that spot, so that there's space on the lot for people to park if you want to, if we draw lines on paper and nobody puts them on and spray paint on the gravel.
Yes.
But showing that there's the capacity to park at the lot and not have people up on the street, basically.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's the.
Eight of 10 spots. That's it.
Yeah, I don't have the chart for industrial in my head, but.
But I guarantee it'd be less than 25.
Yeah, exactly. So that's not, that's not really a question. It's more just, that's a crossing the T kind of a point.
Straight, simple, 25-inch square foot building that's simple, that complies with all the regulations, and straightforward. No traffic, no craziness, no, just very simple. To expand a lot of my business as well, so I can use that to make my living.
I think you probably have just a little security fence to keep people from going in there and dumping stuff.
What we want to do with other.
And that would be something on the site plan if we did.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Significantly different.
So that's the determination that we're looking for. Do we have any additional questions for the parties at this time? Otherwise, we'll be looking for a motion for a determination this is a substantially different project than prior.
I would make a motion that the plan that we talked about in theory, that is around or about 42,000 square feet with around or about 4,000 square foot building would be substantially different than the plan that we denied.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Okay.
Thank you very much. We'll have, whatever, first round next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. The final item on our agenda is a discussion regarding Weeding River Estates. And just to provide a bit of clarification and introduction here while the applicants get ready to be on, to be live in primetime here, Weeding River Estates is a multifamily development that is, was permitted off of South Worcester Street, across from, roughly across from where CFS is. The property has, the property since that permit and the renewal of that permit last year, I think, has since changed hands. And the applicant now is looking to have a discussion with us about potential changes. While we would not be issuing any kind of a decision today, our potential next step would be to decide whether we would view this as a major or a minor modification to that existing special permit. So with that introduction, I believe, Mr. Dunn, that's for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I stole most of my thunder.
Sorry about that.
Try to make it as very brief as possible. My name is Brian Dunn with MBL Land Development and Permitting. I am the principal of the firm with offices at 5 Bristol Drive in southeastern Massachusetts. And you are correct, Mr. Chairman. We have been in front of you for special permit under Article 19, which has an affordable housing component associated with it. We originally got approval a few years back, and we were in front of you roughly about a year ago this time and extended the original decision and permit of that special permit for a period of two years. So we're, we still have a permit active here with the planning board for that special permit under Article 19 until next year around this time. We also, at the same time, extended our order of conditions with the conservation commission, and that order of conditions is valid until sometime around July of 2025. So we still have active permits in place. And recently, about a month ago, we were able to obtain a quote of health approval for our community septic system for this multifamily development. And with your permission, I'm going to share the screen to show you, you know, the new development and the old development.
Please do.
We'll start off with the old development so you can see a limit of work and how big the site plan was. So can everybody see this plan that I have on the screen?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And you can hear me okay?
You can.
Okay, very good. Thank you again. So we're still, you know, the site plan here, of course, uses the single-family house as part of the project, and the other 36 units, as you can see, they were laid out with a series of parking spaces in the back, accessing the back of the building with pavement coming around, with a lot of pavement, and pavement coming around this way here, around our approved septic system and other units here with our approved limit of work that we had on our site plan, as well as our conservation commission plan. as well as our conservation commission plan. And this is the proposed drainage system that we had, which was originally permitted through you and through the planning board as well as the conservation commission. So what we're looking to do is reduce the limit of work, reduce the area of clearing, pretty much keep the same drainage areas that we had, and reduce the number of areas of pavement and tree clearing. So I'm gonna stop sharing this plan, I'm gonna share the other plan so you can see the difference in the two. And I can explain the difference in the two when I get there. Or something, right?
Somehow we're all expected to learn how to use Zoom like a native.
Yeah, I know. See, I'm kinda like, you know, pretty much focused in on my teams these days because that's a Microsoft kind of application.
Yeah.
So it goes, it comes with our, our Microsoft suites. So we don't have to pay for extra things like Zoom and, and other, other type of meeting agenda type of software. So I think I have it now. And voila, ready? Let the magic begin.
There we go.
So, ladies and gentlemen, so we're still keeping the house. You know what we did is we kept the same alignment. And the new units are triplex units with, with garages facing in instead of facing the back. So there's architectural change to this plan and the style of the units. And we kept the same alignment of the roadway. And as you can see, this area here that we were in before with grading, we're not into this area. This is really that sensitive area for the turtle habitat. So really, the reason is for, you know, doing this plan amendment to you guys and going down this road is due to the escalating cost of construction material as well as fill. You know, clean fill is not, you know, $5 a yard anymore. It's actually, you know, upwards of, you know, $30 or $35 a yard or more trucked in and compacted. So we came up with this design which reduces the limit of work, reduces the amount of fill that required, changes the architectural style of the buildings, and reduces the lot of pavement that if you, if you remember in the other plan, had pavement going all the way around the site and up in this area too to gain access for, you know, for the units going around the septic system. So the grading we have here still allows for our septic system to go in. You can see the rectangle area for that septic system. And one more time, limiting and reducing the limit of work, reducing the pavement, and, and still continuing to protect the critters and the environmental aspects of the, of the site as well as the wetlands and the animals that would come here, especially the turtles. As you may know, we also did the same thing like we're doing this evening with the conservation commission. And they were pleasantly pleased to see the reduction in the grading and the pavement. And, you know, pretty much voted to allow a plan amendment to go forward with the caveat that we still come in front of them with that plan amendment, with that, you know, revised information. It would get peer reviewed again and, you know, seek that plan amendment. So we're, we're kinda looking for the same direction from you this evening, Mr. Chairman and the planning board, so that we can go to this final design and submit them back to you and ultimately, you know, God willing, get an approval for that revised plan and, you know, provide some housing, desperately needed housing for the northern community, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. You mentioned that you were already planning to go through peer review, that's with conservation. My memory escapes me. Did they, was the stormwater through their peer reviewer last time?
That's correct. It went through John Chessier, who, as you know, is a very personically, very direct in his review of things. Pays attention to detail. And I was very proud of, of my office and our staff who were able to address his comments, make the changes to the plans, and ultimately get an approval from him for the, the site plan to be approved with the conservation commission and ultimately your, your, your planning board. So I, I do not think that we will be, you know, unable to address any of his concerns that he may arise because we've already, we already know what they are. And that's why we try to keep the drainage the same way. So it, it really wouldn't, you know, adversely affect the original drainage design. There will be some tweaks and changes because we've got a different, you know, grading plan associated with this roadway. So the catch basins and manholes and the piping will be changed. However, the basins and the swales are technically staying the same. Except for that limit of work is, is coming further away from the buffer zones and the riverfront area that was originally approved. And if you may remember, and I can give a little history, this used to be called Strawberry Fields after, you know, the Beatles song. And this was a, a 40B of, I think, 160, 60 lots, something like that. And it went all the way into the back, you know, I'm gonna use my mouse. The roadway went all the way in the back, up against Wading River. And there was multiple houses over here and multiple houses over here. So this is quite a dramatic reduction in the number of units. However, still a viable project, still sensitive to the environmental aspects of this site. And we're just looking for that kind of like high sign from you and your board to say this is a good direction and we'd be, we'd be willing to look into and reviewing the plans and, and making these amendments as, as we go forward with you and with conservation.
Okay, thank you.
You want her?
And just to, to restate, we would need to note it, to post this as we're gonna make a determination about whether it's a minor or major modification to the existing permit. And then we would have those discussions about the, the project itself. But as Mr. Dunn mentioned, he's just looking for directional feedback from us at this point. So we're determining right now whether this is substantially different than the full loop that was proposed? Not even substantially different, just. Reasonably different? If we think, it's not a matter of different, it's a matter of, I'm gonna paraphrase you, Mr. Dunn, so please, I apologize if I misstate here. But in terms of.
No worries.
You're looking for a signal from the board that based on the existing plan that has a permit in place, we'd be open to looking at a modified plan as you showed here.
That is correct.
Comparing the two, the number of units is exactly the same, the number of two-bedroom and three-bedroom units.
I'm sorry, I'm having a very difficult time hearing that person.
Sorry, I was just commenting that the number of units being proposed has not changed. The number of.
That is, that is correct.
Two-bedroom or three-bedroom units. It is, you're not adding to or taking away substantially. The only thing I did note on here that wasn't on the other plan was, I forget what, optional community recreation area. Is that an open space you're proposing?
Yeah, that could be like a dog's park or, or just, just a recreation area for the kids with swing sets or something like that.
Okay.
I like it, I like the direction you're going in.
Thank you.
I appreciate you taking it up. Yeah. I don't have a, a general objection to it. I'm sure that if I remember correctly, there was this particular concern about drainage going off to the left there. So if you're putting more stuff to the left, that's gonna be more numbers for you to deal with with the peer reviewer. But I know you're kind of up on a hill, right? That's what the.
Yeah, as you can see over in this area, this will all stay wooded. We're not even, we're not even directing any of the stormwater in this direction. Everything is coming over this way. And this is really ideal location because of the turtle nesting area. We'll end up, we'll end up seeing turtles, you know, nesting in the slope and things like that over the years. So they'll be, they'll be actually using that drainage basin if it does get constructed. So it's, it's ideal. I mean, and if you remember, your conservation agent, she was, you know, she was also very strict with things. And we made sure that we addressed all of her comments in regards to the turtle nesting and habitat area in that, in this location.
Any other comments from the board here? Or additional comments from anybody else who's joining the meeting? Again, this isn't an official special permit here, it's just a discussion. But we're near a bunch of residential properties and people who are very interested in the project. So I'm just gonna ramble here for three or four seconds and see if anybody would like to raise their hand.
Brian, would you like to touch on how we plan on trying to take that single family home off from the condo association?
Yeah, we, as part of that special permit, we're, we're going to try to remove that single family house up front from the condo association if we can and keep it on its, keep it on its own separate lot. So we'll be, we'll be looking into that as part of, of the revised special permit.
So just be its own lot and then an easement for the driveway or something like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because the new, the driveway itself is coming off of the proposed roadway.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion at this time? Otherwise, I thank Mr. Dunn for his time and we'll see him again soon.
I got one. Is there any publicly accessible areas? Like, could the public park somewhere and see the old cart path?
We haven't put any public access into this to, you know, say access, you know, some of the environmental features. That was never part of the other plan. But, you know, there's, there's ample room to park in to walk down the slope into the existing pathways that go into the wetland areas and has access to Wading River.
Yep. If you're thinking in the direction you might be thinking, Steve, that line of property that goes down from the larger lot to South Worcester Street, in the original plan, there was discussion from the abutters and the applicant at the time that that would potentially be, I think that would be used for utilities and then potentially would be conveyed to some, one of the abutters with the easements for utilities staying there. So they.
Yeah, that's, that's still on the ta, that's still on the table, Mr. Chairman, because we do, we still have to loop the water line for the water department and the highway department. So that will, that will be on the revised set of plans. And conveying some of that land, as, as far as I know, is still on the table. I have, have not heard anything different.
Yeah. But if you were looking at that as a pathway straight to the back, that was.
That, it stood out to me for sure.
I'm sorry, that was broken up.
The, the old cart path stood out to me for sure as maybe like a historic feature of the property.
Yeah, I mean, you've got this, you know, you've got this old cart path that you can see on the plan right through here, where my mouse is going. It goes all, all the way back to Wading River. In fact, I walked it, my surveyors have walked it as well. So it's quite a nice little walk down to Wading River.
There are no other comments? I'll say thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
Looks like we'll be seeing you on another agenda shortly.
Yes, Mark or Ryan, do you have anything you want to add before we take off?
No, I'm all set. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Brian. Thanks, thanks guys on the board.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning, planning board. Thank you very much. Brian, thank you for your help getting us on here and we'll be seeing you soon.
Okay.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome by now.
So with those three discussions out of the way, I just wanna circle back to the code of conduct that was sent out around to us last week.
Pull that up?
Sure, you can pull that up. Brian, I know I had submitted a couple of comments to you that you were gonna share with Mike. Did he give you any guidance about how he would like to receive further comments or not?
No, I just sent it as was.
Okay. So, so please, if you have not already, please take a look at the code of conduct and provide any comments. Excuse me? They are due at the end of July. It's good that we're getting comments and having an opportunity to provide comments instead of the previous policy which came down on us surprisingly. So it's helpful. Editorializing a little bit myself, it's not as helpful to reference another policy that doesn't exist yet within this policy, but that's a whole other story.
Wow.
Which would be the, the social media policy that's referenced on the first page there that doesn't exist. But that was just one of my few comments that I passed along. Obviously, we are here as the planning board. Do we have any general comments or concerns about the, the code of conduct as is or how it would apply to us and our roles as board members?
I'll be honest, I won't just skip it, so. Any comments go through you?
Any comments can, I am not a, I am not a censor. So if you wanna, if we want to, Brian, are you okay being the conduit for, for Mike or would you prefer people send it to Mike directly?
You can send it to me and I can send it to Mike. If, if he responds by saying how he wants to give it to people, then I'll change it.
He's had about a couple of days since you sent mine to speak up if he had it the way he wanted it. So now he is, he gets what he gets. But yeah, so in general, I'll say that the code of conduct is boiled down to please treat each other with professionalism and respect and goes on for three pages. That's pretty much the meat and potatoes of it, which.
Should go without saying.
It, it generally should go without saying, but sometimes the world doesn't make sense, so. Again, I'll, we can discuss this again in our next meeting, which will be before the deadline again. So if we do read through something and we have additional questions, concerns, did I read this the right way? Can other people help me interpret what you think this says? We can do that.
Just curious, did this start with the town manager or start with the select board who created it?
I do not know that. I'm assuming that it may have started as a bit of a joint project, that the first draft may have come from the town manager's office. Since at least the version that I had had a couple of comments from a member of the select board within the document. So if it originated from them, in theory, those comments would have been part of the first draft. But that is complete supposition at that point. But that is complete supposition on my point.
Can we ask Brian to put it on the agenda as a gentle reminder in case?
You don't trust me to remember?
No. I don't trust me to remember to review it before the next meeting.
Okay. That's fair. I also, I also don't mind if you don't trust me to remember either. It's okay.
Selfishly, what's the next meeting look like?
It's, so far, it's just zero Mansfield.
But that will be a significant discussion.
It's my birthday. Planning purposes.
I would take them by lot C D E or as a group?
Well, the plans themselves are separated by that.
Yeah.
But we're going to take them all at once. Because it's the same lot of land.
Generally, not my preferred approach personally.
Will we have water and sewer coming to visit with us at some point?
At some point. I haven't heard back when they're available. But I imagine, well, I talked with Joe Codliano, and he thinks he's going to be able to make it to next meeting to talk to us about whether or not he wants to do, whether or not we want to do so.
And do you mind?
No, just so.
Just so. Okay. So, that's what we have on our penciled in agenda at this point. We could still have an A and R or something come up, which does need to go through us in a certain period of time, otherwise it is approved otherwise. And just to confirm, did everybody receive the notice that we have a new planner joining?
I heard you did great fine though.
Okay. So, we have a new planner joining, I believe, August first?
Seven.
August seventh. I mean, it was a narrow number. And they are coming from Hanson, where they were the planner. So.
Their name is Antonio De Freyes. Maybe I'm butchering their last name.
But yes.
Who would hold it against you?
He might, but he might. But they're starting in August, so they won't be here for our next session, but they are coming. So, it'll be great. We'll just have to find a little space at these tables. Okay. Is there anything else that we wanted to discuss in the open session? Brian, did you have anything else? I'm sure I stole your thunder on that.
No, I wasn't sure if anyone else kind of.
Okay.
Do we have any more momentum about the other property on Mansfield and Reservoir?
The Reservoir Estates?
Yeah.
Which ones have been lost in progress?
Reservoir Estates is the one next to the reservoir. This is.
Oh, that one. That one. The, the subdivision that we denied.
Yes. Where we want it.
Okay. Yes. But yeah, so we'll see them again and see them again.
Cool. And Tim, I got a question. When is, I hear that the groundbreaking for the new tunnel is going to be on July thirteenth. Is it correct?
Nobody's told me, so apparently I'm not important enough. Sorry, Peter.
It's okay.
We'll see if we can get that date for you, Peter. Anybody have anything further? Otherwise, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Some would.
Seconded. Thank you, Laura and Steve. Any further discussion on the motion to adjourn? Bearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening.